Good evening. Good evening. The time is 7:00 PM. We're going to start the April 18th, 2023 Altadena Town Council meeting. Okay, we're called to order. And first on our agenda tonight, we're going to do things a little differently. We will not be doing our traditional salute to our flag. We will be using this time to salute and celebrate one of our neighbors. Tiana Brown is an exceptional 18-year-old, early high school graduate who has demonstrated an unwavering commitment to academic excellence, community service, and leadership. Tiana has excelled academically and completed over 240 hours in internship and volunteer programs related to her field of interest. Her passion for her community helped her lead, led her to start the organization Education is Achievable. It's an upcoming startup nonprofit organization that guides underserved youth in achieving their life and higher educational goals. Tiana is a hard-working youth leader who, despite facing health and housing instability challenges, was a top student and spoke as a graduation speaker. She's a role model that exemplifies her exceptional leadership skills and resilience. Moreover, she is a first generational college student who will be pursuing a dual degree in management engineering at Pittsor College this fall, furthering her education and experience. Tiana hopes to one day launch her own business and give back to her community. Southern California Edison Scholars Program honors Tiana by awarding her a $50,000 scholarship. So tonight... David, you want to come up? David Fort is from Southern California Edison.
Thank you so much, Madam President and Altadena Town Council. This has been a great moment in my 26-years-career at Edison. While I wasn't able to attend the actual presentation that our company presented to check to you, which is quite a surprise, I'm sure, but tonight it's here in your hometown among your friends and this council acknowledging you for your academic accomplishment. You're one of 30 students who received $50,000 scholarship. And, you know, I wanted to come here tonight because I wanted to personally meet you and, you know, lend the support of myself along with other Edison employees to be a mentor, to be a coach, to help you along the next four years. And hopefully after you finish your academic career or education, you'll come back here to Edison and work.
He's recruiting already.
Yeah. Reggie, who works for Southern California, sits on the council seat, and we both are just so proud of this moment. And I can also speak for the council as well, for them to recognize you tonight. So, thank you. I met your, had a chance to talk to your mom on the phone several times, and she is so, so proud of you, so proud of you. And we are too.
We are very proud.
We'd like to get a couple photos. I'm going to ask Susie, with Supervisor Barger's office to come up, and then Reggie, and then other council members to join us in this picture.
Why don't you want to hold it? Or you want to hold it?
When we do this over here, so...
Go in front. Yeah. You go around. There you go. Three, two, one. And then, Tiana, we have a certificate for you that reads, oh my goodness. Certificate of Altadena Town Council Recognition Presented to Tiana Brown. On the occasion of being awarded the Edison International STEM Scholarship, the Altadena Town Council recognizes your hard work and dedication to academic excellence on this day, April 18th, 2023. Thank you so much. Okay, she wants to make another quick.
Tiana, did you want to say something? I think she wants to say a few words.
Well, first, I'd just like to thank the Altadena Town Council and all of Southern California of Edison for awarding me this amazing recognition and this amazing scholarship. And I definitely like to thank Altadena for being such an amazing and supporting community for helping me just in my academic challenges and my, just supporting my community. And I'd just like to thank, thank you for all of Altadena, and I love you all.
Thank you. All right. Thank you for making us proud. Thank you. And thank Edison for giving that to someone in Altadena. I'm just waiting because the guy won the Lotto, she a $50,000? What, is there another thing coming up? Oh, I don't know. That's like the booby prize, maybe. But, okay, let's move on to roll call. Dorothy Wong.
Thank you, Chair Jones. Roll call. Let's start with Reginald Wilkins. Doug Cauliflower.
Here.
Connor Cipolla.
Present.
Victoria Knapp.
Present.
Sylvia Vega.
Here.
Thank you. Diane Markison.
Here.
Billy Malone.
Present.
Thank you. Nick Arndson.
Here.
Chris O'Malley.
I'm here.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Dr. Sandra Thomas.
Oh, Dr. Thomas asked me to inform the council that she is unable to make it in-person today, but she is watching online, and she does have a text available to me if she wants to add anything to the conversation. So she's excused.
Thank you. Veronica Jones.
Here.
Thank you. Where is Rod?
Excused.
Yes.
Alan.
Myself, Dorothy Wong is here, Pat Sutherland.
Here.
And Alan Peck.
Excused.
Thank you. And Melissa Marona. So I think we have a quorum, two?
Two, no, yeah.
Three.
Three, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving along, we have our 1.3 to approve our April 18th, 2023 meeting agenda. Vice Chair, Knapp.
Good evening, fellow council members and community members, both here and watching online. There are agendas in the back of the room, as well as public comment cards that look like this. The council welcomes input from the community on both agendized and non-agendized items. If you would like to make public comment, please fill out a card and give it to a council person on either end of the dais. While the council does not respond to public comment during the meeting, if you would like a response, please make sure to leave your contact information at the bottom of the form. This process is in place to ensure that everyone wishing to make public comment has the time to do so and that we can conduct this meeting in an orderly fashion. Council members, the Altadena Town Council Executive Committee met on Tuesday, April 11th, to set the agenda for tonight's meeting. The agenda was circulated to you on Saturday, April 15th. I received a couple of changes. One addition is that Stephen Gutierrez from Public Works will be presenting on item 4.2. And we got late word that Maria Greiken from LA County Fire will not be in attendance, so you can strike item 3.3. Are there any other changes?
I'd like to give my time to Alex Gonaz. He's our new regional manager.
Great.
So I'm the chair's reporter.
Okay, so that'll be Alex Gonaz. And council member Sutherland.
Since I understand that we're, we have a time issue tonight, I would say we can eliminate the report from ACAB.
Any other changes? Okay, I move the agenda be approved as amended.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstention? So moved. Okay, so we're going to move on to 2.1, which Alex Gonaz, come on, come up.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Chair. Good evening, everybody. My name is Alex Gonaz with Los Angeles County Department of Aging and Disability. It's Gonaz, always get the question, G-O-N-A-Z, and Nancy, easy, very uncommon name, so you might not see that everywhere. Really great to be here, really great for the invitation received. It's, I've been 14, 14, going on 14 years working with LA County, over 10 years of experience in workforce development. I really look forward to continuing working with the council and really having the opportunity to be part of the community here in Altadena. Just started over a couple, three weeks ago, and the unity and the community, you know, seeing the wonderful things that are going on here in the centers. I'm overseeing our Altadena Community Center, our Altadena Senior Center, and surrounding areas that include our Antelope Valley Senior Center and our Santa Clarita, Santa Clarita Community Center as well. So working in those areas, working with the folks over there and working here, I really look forward to contributing as much as I can to your council here and making sure that we can work together to help the community, help all the members and the residents here and our constituents moving forward. So thank you very much. I can, you know, share my information with the council afterwards, so you can make that available to everyone. And if you need anything, I'm here for you as well. So appreciate the moment, and thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, and welcome. Okay, he replaced Liliana Garcia. Okay, we're going to move on to our vice chair's report, 2.1.
Are you on my time, Chair?
Oh, okay, we're moving right along here. Okay, we're going to move on then, 2.3, our recording secretary, Nick Arndson.
Thank you, Chair. The minutes from the March 21st Town Council meeting were sent out to full council last week. I received no corrections or additions. Chair Jones, I move that we accept the minutes by unanimous consent.
Okay, if there's no objections, so moved. Okay, treasurer's report.
Oh, yeah, hi. For the period starting on March 1st, 2023, and ending March 31st, 2003, we begin, we began, thanks, Danny. We begin with a balance of $2,444.78. We had deposits of $98, $96, sorry, thanks to the generosity of the Altadena community. We had $565.03 worth of withdrawals, primarily to cover the annual retreats and the holiday party expenses. And we ended the balance with a $1,975.75. As always, I would like to take the time to remind everybody, both in the community center and watching at home, that the Altadena Town Council is a volunteer organization that depends entirely upon the contributions of our neighbors for our budget. So if you would please, if you just have a dollar or two, just put it in the can right here.
20, whatever.
50. 1,000.
Okay.
We'll take what we can get. Beggars can't be choosers.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that report. Okay, we move on to 2.5, our corresponding secretary, council member Wong.
Thank you, Chair Jones. To move this along, there's going to be some great events that you'll hear about during the meeting today. So check out the ongoing calendar on the Altadena Town Council website, which will also be going through some amazing updates. Stand by, get ready, it's going to be lots of fun. And please support our Altadena Farmers Market on Wednesdays, 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM. And onward, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to public safety report, 3.1, our California Highway Patrol. Officer Keller?
Boyd.
Boyd, oh.
No, Bay.
Bay.
Sorry.
I'll try, I'll just try them all and see which one.
Great. Well, good evening, council members, members of the public. I'm Officer Bay with the California Highway Patrol, and I'll be providing March 2023's traffic crash report and upcoming events. So for the months of March, the California Highway Patrol investigated a total of 21 traffic crashes. Seven of those are hit and runs, one for driving under influence, 10 being property damage only, and three traffic crashes with injury, excuse me, injuries. Out of those, there was one traffic crash that was involved with a bicyclist. There was also a hit run that sustained injuries as well. That occurred on Woodbury and Glen Rose in the month of March, just for special distinction. My safety tip is the Altadena CHP, we actually perform child safety seat installs every Wednesday of the month, or every week, I should say, every Wednesday of the month for every week. So please contact our Altadena CHP office in order to get an appointment for an installation. You'll be either talked to by myself or Officer Keller or one of the other officers there. And also, April is our distracted driving awareness month, so please keep that in mind that we're going to be targeting some more education and maybe some enforcement in terms of distracted driving. I want to say that the CHP is hiring. We want to kind of fill our ranks here. We also want to make sure that we have members of the community that are, that know the area that can help, help the community as well. So we're looking to hire close to 1,100 new officers, so if you know of anybody, please send them our way. Our radar trailer has been repaired by Public Works. Hopefully, there's no more rain, so we don't have any electrical issues, but, so that is up and running, and we're going to be deploying that very soon. Officer Keller and myself have been enforcing the Altadena Drive pretty heavily, making sure our presence is known and that speeders slow down in that area. The Altadena Office also participated in two special enforcement units, one being commercial. I know I always kind of touch upon that, but I have some statistics. So last month, we performed a special enforcement detail along the 210 corridor. We issued, in combination with other offices, but a total of 250 moving violations, 122 mechanical violations, 45 warnings, and we placed approximately 10 drivers out of service. So that's what we did for that month, and we're going to be continuing that as well. And we're also performing these highway violence enforcement units. So we've been getting a lot of increase of calls of road rage, tailgating, and other violent behaviors on the roadway. So we've been actively pursuing those drivers and taking enforcement action on those. Also, we will be at the John Muir High School this weekend at the Science Fest, so come say hi to our booth, and have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them. That concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
Okay, go ahead.
The car, the car seat?
Yes.
Where and is, where should the resident call for an appointment?
Call our CHP, our California, our CHP office at Altadena. It's area code 626-296-8100. It's completely free, but our appointments, of course, are limited, so might have to pencil you in at a different date, but...
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any more questions? Would the captain like to come up? We haven't seen him in a while. Captain Moulton?
I'm Derek Moulton. I'm captain of the Altadena area. Good to be here tonight. Thanks for having us. Good to be here.
Good to see you.
Yeah, yeah, good to be here. Yeah, so as Officer Bay, gosh, you really covered a lot of ground there. We've really been doing a lot lately with a lot of our overtime details and details during the regular workday to address a lot of the traffic concerns in the area. You know, we, as Officer Bay mentioned, we're hiring, and not just for officer positions, but we have non-uniform positions as well. So we're, you know, we're hiring dispatchers, and we just have a whole host of career opportunities for, for anyone who's interested. And again, we love hiring from the local community, so, yeah. Does anyone have any questions for me?
No questions.
Captain Moulton, thank you for being here. Gives me the opportunity to ask. I know there's been some resolution on the Bronstein death. I know the council and community are interested. Will there be retraining on what now happens beyond that settlement?
So unfortunately, that's not something that I can talk about right now. It's still a matter that's in litigation. You know, we're obviously a big organization, and so that's, that's not something I can, I can discuss.
And do you know when you might be able to give us an...
That I don't have either, unfortunately. If I did, I, you know, I'd certainly share it, you know? That's why I'm here, to try to field as many questions as I can, but...
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? No? Okay, all right, thank you. There's another CHP, I see him standing there. Yeah, he always hides in the, over on the side.
I like presenting, so it's okay.
Yeah, just come and introduce yourself. Forward, okay. Oh, okay, all right, my glasses are not...
Good evening, Officer Phil, California Patrol.
Okay, yeah, there we know who he is, okay.
Me and Bay alternate on presenting, and that's why he was wearing the bow tie, and I'm not exactly presentable.
Okay.
But I'm glad to be here and always, as always, happy to answer any questions.
I do have a quick question. Do you routinely patrol New York Drive north of Sierra Madre Villa, where it, where it be, where, Sierra Madre Boulevard, I should say, where it becomes Altadena? I just noticed that there had been a sign there that said there was a new speed limit, which was 40...
45.
Okay, 45 miles an hour, however...
Where it drops from 55.
Now that's gone, and the signs were never changed.
It wasn't related to anybody.
It wasn't related to anybody? What does that mean?
The city didn't do it, these guys didn't do it.
Oh, nobody did it? Oh, just a fun prank.
There were some calls made, and I guess it went away.
It went away, okay. Well, then, there you go. No, no enforcing 45 miles on New York Drive.
But I am patrolling.
That's good to know. All right.
Glad we cleared that up.
Haven't seen you in a while, so...
Thank you.
Okay, that's great.
But thank you. All right, so we got something cleared up, that's good. Okay, all right, so let's move right on along, let's keep on shrugging here. Our special presentations?
No, Captain Moulton.
Oh, I, oh, I forgot, our own sheriff station. Okay, our captain? Williams, I'm sorry, I'm moving too fast.
That's okay.
Too much coffee.
Thanks for having me. Good evening. So just real fast, a few crime stats. Our aggravated assaults have increased for this month by 11%. Those are mostly all domestic violence or family issues. We did have two isolated incidents, one at a group home and then one in a gated community. I'll talk about it later. Property crimes, they're down 14%. It's a good thing. The thing I really want to point out is the theft from vehicles, they're down 34%. So that's good that, I think the community is getting the message and doing a good way of protecting their property, so keep up the good work. The one isolated incident I want to talk about, we did have a homicide in Altadena. It occurred on March 22nd. Deputies responded to a residence because of a burglary call, and they get there and they find a young person that was shot. The person was barely responsive, they transported to the hospital, and unfortunately, he passed away. It wasn't just a random act, it was totally isolated. Our homicide detectives for our bureau is actively investigating the crime. And that's all I, the information I have on that for now. We did have another incident on Altadena and Lincoln of a minor being groped. A deputy saw a young lady in the street or on the sidewalk, appeared to be distraught, asked the young lady what happened, they said some person inappropriately touched him in the crotch area. They were able to give a description and the direction that the person went. They, the deputies did a good job and actually found the person. They did a show up, and the person was able to identify the person. So that's good. The person that, that was arrested is still in custody now, so we do have somebody that was potentially dangerous off the street. The deputies did a great job of locating that person. In the past, we've had a, a lot of landscaping thefts, and the good thing on last, two weeks ago, they actually caught someone, not in the act, but they had just finished stealing some landscaping equipment. The deputies located the person and found a lot of landscaping equipment in the back of their car, and they were able to tie that person to a lot of the different thefts that we've been having in Altadena. So hopefully, the landscaping thefts will go down. Couple of events I want to talk about, we did have a catalytic converter etching event. It went pretty well last week on Wednesday. We were able to etch a few cars at the station. We plan on having more in the future. This Saturday, we have a prescription drug takeback day. We're working with the DEA. It's going to be this Saturday from 10:00 to 2:00, right in front of the station. So if you have prescription drugs that you want to drop off, you can certainly bring it to the station, and we'll, we'll take them off your hands. We have just completed, each year we have to update our school safety plans, we just completed that, and we're looking to work, have a great partnership with the schools continued for the rest of the year. And then the last thing I want to talk about is a, this is Autism Awareness Month. We, at the station, got together, is, put together a patch, is similar to the Pink Patch Project that was in the past, and I just want to show the patch that we have. We have two of them. One's for the sheriff's department, it just got approved last week. Sheriff says we can start passing them out. And then we also have one for Altadena, just our station. They are on sale for 10 bucks apiece, and all of the proceeds will go to a charity benefiting autism awareness. That's all I have to present, unless there's any questions. Yes, ma'am.
I know that we have worked together on approaching some of the homeless folks that have taken up residency in front of the school, and the woman in particular has moved south of the school, so south of Boston, still on Lake. The concern, and I know county is here, and I know, I think I just want to make sure that we're following the right protocol. We're now, we have sort of an encampment growing there, where there's about three homeless people that are all in front of that abandoned building that's just south of Elliott on the east side of the street. So I always hesitate to report it to, through the Works app. So what is the best course of action, really?
Well, now that you've mentioned it, tomorrow, I'll contact, the county has a homeless outreach team, and they'll come out to the area, and they'll try to provide services for the person. So if you do see an encampment, it doesn't hurt to call the station and, you know, we'll try to do something about it.
Thank you.
It seems to be a growing problem, because there's one on Lincoln, and now there's one on Windsor and a Royal.
Yes, I just became, just became aware of the one on Windsor, yes.
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Captain, I know this is probably on your mind too, but I want to assure the community that the captain and the council are still thinking about the Charles Town's death, and will be waiting for updates from that investigation.
Yes, as, again, it's Department of Justice, California, they're still investigating, and once they complete their investigation, they'll, they'll give us the results and even publish it, so...
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
We don't take questions from the audience, but you can ask him outside, okay? Is that fine with you?
Yeah, that's...
They're going to meet you outside for questions.
That's fine.
But we don't take, okay. Any more questions up here? No? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, but he, he'll step outside and talk to you, okay? All right, we're going to move along, and here's a special presentation that I'm excited about. I have been talking about this now for years, Charles White Park. I have been talking about this now for years, Charles White Park. All right, come on up.
Wow, thank you. Thank you for this opportunity to present this project. For your information, the Charles White Park renovation project. My name is Chester Kano. I'm with County Parks. I'm a division chief over Capitol Projects and Design. And we've been planning this project for a while, and we are thankful for the support of Susie Niemer and Supervisor Barker's office with their guidance and leadership. We've put together a draft project for you to look at. We are here to present, but we are mostly here to listen, and we'd like to hear people's opinions about what we presented. We put some thought into it, we've studied the park, but there's nothing like personal input from people who know. I'd like to introduce project manager for the project, Daniel Abrate, and he'll take the lead on the presentation.
Good evening, council. Good evening, residents of Altadena. As Chester mentioned, my name is Daniel Abrate. I'm the project manager on the Charles White Park renovation project, and I wanted to give you an update on both where we're at with the Charles White renovation project, but also with the current projects we have at Charles White. So I want to talk about the restroom renovation and the playground projects, and then lead into the renovation project. We also have our colleagues here from Public Works who will discuss a potential stormwater project, which will also be related to the Charles White project. Just for context, you know, I'm fairly sure you, most of you are familiar with the location of Charles White. And in relation to La Malta, Farnsworth, and Triangle Park, Charles White Park was dedicated to the county in October of nineteen eighty, approximately, almost a year after the death of Charles White. In those forty years, the park has seen very little improvement. The wooden playground structure that was originally there was replaced. There was the addition of a park office, but other than that, hasn't seen too much work in that time. The park itself currently features a playground. You click through those. A restroom building, outdoor fitness area, a covered picnic area, and then the park office. So the renovation project, I'm sorry, the restroom renovation project was part of a grant-funded project. It was completed in November of last year, which basically, which provided new amenities and upgrades of existing fixtures inside the restroom. The playground replacement project is part of a countywide effort to upgrade and replace a multitude of our existing playgrounds. That project is currently in the design phase. We've already placed the order for the playground equipment, and we should be starting work in October of this year. We're expecting that completion to be by the end of this year, so December. These are the renderings provided by the playground equipment manufacturer, similar to what we have at Farnsworth, in both style and color and features. The playground, the surfacing itself will feature resilient, the port-in-place rubberized surfacing, as opposed to, it currently has sand and, I believe, engineered wood fiber. So the renovation project for Charles White, what we're looking to do is, is to bring a few key features to the, to the park. Kind of going around the perimeter on the left-hand side, sort of in the middle, we're looking at renovating the park office area with a prefabricated multipurpose building. In addition to that, an outdoor classroom and an expanded and enclosed staff patio area. Coming around towards the bottom area, you'll notice the darker landscaped areas. Those are areas we're looking at removing existing turf and replacing it with either mulch or low-growing ground covers, just to minimize the amount of turf that is currently in those areas. As we come around the bottom off of Mountain View Street, you'll see that sort of orange canopy down in the bottom right corner. We're proposing a fabric shade sail to cover the, to the outdoor workout equipment area and upgrading the equipment featured there. Coming up around to the top right corner, we're proposing the installation of two pickleball courts, similar to what we have at Farnsworth, which also include fencing and lighting. And overall, if you'll notice, kind of towards, in, off of Ventura, parallel to Ventura, there's additional walkway which will connect the sort of two existing north-south walking paths and create a continuous walking loop throughout the park. Next slide. This is a cross-section of the proposed pickleball court, courts. That area in that upper corner there, kind of, there is some existing grade, so the pickleball courts will be terraced as they come down towards the park. And we put together this image board, kind of showing the kind of inspiration between some of the components that we're looking at providing to, for Charles White. I should mention that one of the big components is a civic arts component, both through the civic arts department, but also through our consultant as well. And having both of them team up to provide, basically, various works, for example, like pathway etchings or painting on the ceilings of the shade structures, to basically pay homage to Charles White himself. Additionally, we have photos of, for example, we are proposing to add pedestrian-scale pathway lighting along the, along the walking path. As I mentioned, additional and upgraded outdoor equipment, outdoor classroom. We see a, come example of the fabric shade sail at the bottom of the corner there. Currently, the project schedule, we're looking to adopt the board letter to, to move forward with the project in August of this year. Currently, the board letter is in its draft phase. From August to February of next year, we're looking to perform our consultant design work. Once that's completed, in February, we're looking to, to award construction to our contractor. I'll touch on this a little bit later, but part, we'd like to start early and sort of phase a project in such a way that we don't have to basically shut down the entire park to perform all these improvements, but rather do them in one section at a time. During that time, from February to August, we're looking to get jurisdictional approvals, so basically, plan check and permitting through Public Works Building and Safety. And we're looking for ultimate completion of the project, renovation project in December of 2025. Current project funding, we have approximately between three to three-point-three million from the Fifth District of funds, which includes excess funds from profit, from various Prop. A projects. And we also have seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of federal funds that were brought to us through Representative Judy Chu. Regarding the phasing of the project, so what we're looking at, slide. Yeah, we have a few there. So we're looking at the playground replacement project beginning October through December of this year. And then the next phase, we're looking at the turf replacement and landscaping, so that'll be replacing those turf areas, installing trees as soon as the consultant work is done, so February of next year. And then one of the major components that will take some significant effort would be the pickleball courts, the installation of the shade sail over the fitness area, and the construction of what right now we're calling a crescent meadow, which is sort of a bermed lawn area with wild grasses and wildflowers that features additional seating around the perimeter of it. That we're looking at between October of next year through June of 2025. And lastly, would be the installation of the multipurpose building and outdoor classroom towards the end of the project. Oh, that is, yeah. That, that is our last slide, yeah. One last thing, sorry. One thing I should mention is, for the area, we're looking at a potential stormwater project, which we, we have two of our colleagues here from Public Works, which can discuss that for us.
A couple of things, sorry. Couple of things I want to emphasize before our Public Works friends come up. Basically, we are, we were planning for the Public Works Stormwater Project from the last iteration. So the project is essentially a donut. We're leaving the inside, the hollow part, open so that Public Works can do their thing later. So there will be a time when it looks like only the edges are improved, and then, but the, the lawn is, is perhaps looking a little shabby. But in time, as part of the Public Works project, there will be improvements to that multipurpose field. The other thing I'd like to mention is that our colleagues from Civic Art, County, LA County Civic Art, Department of Arts and Cultures, could not make it tonight, but they will have a pivotal role in this project. One of the things that we wanted to correct was that this, this park, as many of you know, is named after Charles White, a very prominent African-American artist. His show at LACMA a couple of year, a few years back was, was amazing, and a lot of us at the department visited that show and were amazed that we had this park named after Charles White, and he did all this amazing work. And a lot of the people who visit the park don't know that. So we aim to correct that, both in terms of some of the design flourishes. You can see like these dotted circle near the entry at the Ventura side and the Mountain View side. We want to have some kind of gateway entry to the park that honors the memory of Charles White. And we also hope to do some interpretive panels to, to perhaps take a more didactic approach to just teach about his history as an artist in, in Southern California. So those are the two things. The last thing I'll throw out, I'll reemphasize that this project will take longer because of this phased approach. It's something that, that we'd like to hear about, if you have an opinion on it. Obviously, if we close down the park for a period of time, the work would go faster, but we felt it was a good compromise to perhaps do it and do the improvements in quadrants and not have to close the park. Okay, thank you.
And I just want to say something about Charles White Park. When, okay. A few years back, maybe four years back, when Antonio was here, we did a little research on Charles White Park because we were so interested in having something done to it. Okay, and this, these statistics have totally increased. Charles White Park, at the time, had fourteen hundred visitors a month at that little park. Farnsworth Park had sixteen hundred, and it's three times the size of Charles White Park. So there was only a two hundred, two hundred visits different in the size of the park. But the usage and what you could do at Charles White Park was so much more limited than Farnsworth. So that's why I just kind of got on a campaign for Charles White Park. It was just totally unfair. So I just wanted to bring that to light. It is a well-used park. So, okay, all right. So the next part of the presentation we're going to have.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. My name is Felicia Yin. I'm a civil engineering assistant, and I'm with my colleague Cara Plord, an associate civil engineer at Los Angeles County Public Works in Stormwater Quality Division. Next slide, please. First, I'm going to give a little background on why we're doing a stormwater, or why we do stormwater capture projects. There are many different sources of pollutants. Some come from metals from the roads, such as copper from brick pads, chemicals from human activities, such as pesticides and fertilizers in gardens, the trash from the city streets, and bacteria from human and non-human waste that flow into our water bodies. So some of these pollutants that enter our water channels come from wet weather events such as storms, dry weather events such as people washing their cars, or even like sprinklers. And they go into our gutters, which then enters our open channels and flushes into our oceans. Some basic stormwater components. First, we have a diversion structure, which is a pipe that diverts water from our existing stormwater network, storm drain network. This water then goes into the pretreatment system, which eliminate, which reduces the amount of trash and settlement, and then goes into an infiltration component, which in this case is a storage basin and a dry well structure. This storage basin collects the water and help the dry well structure infiltrate into the ground. I'm going to talk about how a dry well structure works. It is an underground structure, underground well, that we drill to a specific depth to allow water to infiltrate into the ground to supply our groundwater aquifer. So the project scope for this park is as follows. We are planning to divert from the existing storm drain on Ventura Street into a pretreatment system before entering our infiltration system in the multipurpose field at the park. And it is anticipated to divert and capture up to forty-four acre feet annually, which can supply approximately eighty-eight households. For our project schedule, we are anticipated to finish our planning phase in August of 2023, with the design phase starting in March of 2024. Our funding is currently funded through the planning phase, but we are looking for opportunities for funding through Measure W and Safe Clean Funding for design and construction. And this is my contact information if you have any questions. Thank you. Are there any questions? That's it. Sorry. Yes.
What's the, what's the interplay between the water corporations in this area and this capture project?
Sorry, can you repeat that?
The water corporations in the foothills here?
Oh.
And who, like, who owns the water, and how's that relationship work?
Yeah, I think this area is the Raymond Basin, the Raymond Groundwater Basin, and we do outreach before the projects, and we'd reach out to all the agencies before putting water in the ground.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, all right. Thank you. Can you guys give your names? I saw it on the thing, but that's only Felicia.
Yeah, and I'm Cara Plord. I work with Felicia at Stormwater Quality Division of Public Works.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So happy for Charles White Park. The wheels of, I guess, the county moves, but sometimes they just take, you just have to keep grinding away. And they do work, and it does happen. And Charles White Park is really, shows that. You just keep on, and when the right time comes, it happens.
And thank you to Captain Barker for so much money and to Judy Chu.
Yeah, and to, we'll have time to thank them, for sure. We'll do a special thank you. Okay. No, he's, are you continuing though?
Yeah, with the street sweeping?
Oh, we're moving on. Oh, okay. I'm just wondering. He's standing there. Okay. Okay, four point two. Wake up, Veronica. Okay. Street sweeping, LA County Public Works.
All right, thank you for having me tonight, everyone. My name is Stephen Guterres. I'm an associate civil engineer with LA County Public Works, and I'm here to present about proposed and revised street sweeping restrictions for the Altadena area. Excellent. So just a little bit of background on street sweeping in the area. Public Works sweeps approximately one hundred seventy curb miles of street sweeping in the area weekly. The goal of street sweeping is to reduce debris, litter, and other pollutants from entering the storm drain network. And also, it improves the cleanliness of neighborhoods by reducing that debris and clutter that is in the gutter. Next slide. So we have two big proposals currently in the works. One of the proposals is this neighborhood right here between Allen Avenue and Altadena Drive and south of New York Drive, and a portion of, south of Washington Boulevard. Those regulations, for the most part, are proposed for seven AM to eleven AM, although a portion of Allen Avenue on the west side is proposed for nine AM to one PM. Next slide. And then the other portion of the proposal, which there was unfortunately an air- And then the other portion of the proposal, which there was unfortunately an error in the notice that was sent out on the north, uh, north of New York Drive, the proposal for that is nine AM to one PM. Next slide. So a lot of residents are asking why these proposed regulations came about. So this is part of a Public Works outreach process. We mailed a notice to all residents in the affected area to inform them of this proposal. This proposal was initiated from request from various residents in the area that had concerns that, as you can see, like in that picture right there, where the streets people will constantly pass vehicles that are parked in the roadway. So as part of that process, what we do to move forward with possibly posting the area is we'll send out this notice to all properties in the affected area to get feedback from the residents, see whether they are in favor or opposition to those, uh, uh, street sweeping regulations. We don't want to impose street sweeping regulations without getting feedback from the community. So those notices were mailed out to solicit that feedback from everyone. Next slide. So currently, we are in a feedback period. We did actually extend the feedback period until March, uh, sorry, May thirty first. And based on the results of that feedback period, if the majority of residents are in favor of proposed regulations, Public Works, we will move forward with adopting the regulations. Once the regulations are adopted and the new signs are posted, another notice would be mailed out prior to LA County Parking Enforcement beginning citations and a three-week adjustment window would be given to residents. If a majority of residents are opposed to the proposed parking regulations, we will either revise them to limit the scope to select streets where the need is greatest or cancel them based on the feedback received. Again, we are seeking feedback right now, so there is no intention at this time to post at a definite time. We're in that feedback period early on. In the meantime, though, please do continue to follow the current street sweeping schedule. Public Works will also be mailing out a revised notice to residents on the north, uh, north of New York Drive, with that corrected time as well from nine AM to one PM. Next slide. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me. There's my email address and my phone number. I just also wanted to point out that Public Works, we do have an online, a street sweeping website, webpage on our website. On that page, you could see the current, uh, street sweeping routes for your area. Not all of the streets in the, the area are posted, though, so just be aware that if the street is not posted, uh, there is, you will not be sighted. Any questions, anyone? That's it for my presentation.
Any questions?
Yeah.
I just want to make clear, for feedback, if you are in the affected areas that you didn't receive the postcard, do you want residents to reach out to you with the mail address here?
Yes, if anyone didn't receive the mailer, they can reach out to me and I could go ahead and provide them with that information.
Any more questions?
Yes.
No, you go first. Well, you have my phone. So I guess maybe Victoria addressed it. So there were other areas that also got notices, so.
Yes, there were a couple of other areas where we're doing some, uh, smaller revisions throughout Altadena on, um, mostly between like Fair Oaks and Lincoln Avenue. There's some, a few smaller portions right there. Most of those are just revisions, so based on the feedback we received so far, most of them have been on the, the area where the new restrictions are. That's where we're receiving their strongest opposition, but we really haven't received much feedback from the areas that are already posted where there's just revisions.
Thank you.
Okay, so residents have until May thirty first.
Correct.
And then there's a three-week period that people will get used to if it gets approved. When do you anticipate the start of this, should it get approved?
So we're, we're still very early on in the conceptual phase. And again, there's a lot of opposition from residents based on the feedback we received so far. So I, I can't give a definite date right now. We'll very likely revisit it at that time based on the, the final findings of the feedback and then determine if we're going to move forward from there or cancel or revise the proposal. But we'll follow up with everyone on that.
Thank you.
I have one more question from a constituent who wanted to understand because a lot of times there are parked cars and it almost is futile. If there's anything that we can do, um, you know, whether it's worth going down the street at all. Anyway, I'm just relaying concerns that a lot of residents have because the cars are parked and it's sort of a futile effort.
Yeah. So if I could just clarify, their concern was what do you do if you see that it's not effectively cleaning the street? Even if the cars are gone, their complaint is that they are seeing it go down the street, but a lot of stuff is still there. Are they, can they report that somehow?
Uh, yeah, they, they can definitely report that to me as well and I, we could look into that matter. If it's an area that's not posted, we could either look into posting or see what's causing the issue as well.
I have one, one question. I've been here same place for twenty-three years and I haven't noticed any changes that would sort of warrant this policy change. I understand stormwater, I did research on stormwater pollution years ago, I understand it's important, but is there something that's actually happening besides someone complaining that's leading to this change? I mean, we have had a lot of rain recently, twice in the last, what, fifteen years, had a lot of rain. But are there some stats, are there something happening with mercury or things that we want to mitigate? Or people just want to throw some signs up in the area?
Uh, it, it's usually request driven, so these ones are requests from residents. But again, we're trying to get feedback from everyone else in the community. That way we don't implement something that just a few residents want. We're trying to get feedback from everyone as a whole.
Any more questions? Okay, Pat.
I'm guessing I can probably just look on YouTube and re, and, and I couldn't tell from the map where it, that actually was. And as someone who lives on New York Drive, I'm kind of curious as to what are the parameters of, how far each way are you going?
Uh, New York Drive, the restrictions are from Allen Avenue to Pass, Altadena Drive, where our boundary with Pasadena is.
So from, so from Allen East?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Not me. Not me.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm playing music. Okay, okay, we're gonna move on to our community reports. And we're gonna, um, Ryan, I, I saw, Ryan is not here. Someone new is here. Okay, okay. Parks and Rick.
Portillo, the Recreation Services Manager. I oversee the parks in Altadena. I'm just going to give you guys a few updates with regards to our parks. For Loma Alta Park, um, some of you may be aware of the basketball gym. It has been closed for the month of April. It's going to open up in May, they're resurfacing it, so don't be alarmed. And then we are having a stakeholder meeting on April twenty-ninth from one PM to three PM at Loma. The location is still to be determined. I left a couple of flyers there, so if there's any community partners, organizations here in Altadena that do want to come out to the event, we more than welcome you. It's going to be a networking event, so we want to kind of see what kind of programs or resources you guys have available during our events. And then another update too is our Tiny Talks program is actually finishing up their semester, so they're going to be having their graduation sometime in June. With regards to Charles Farnsworth Park, um, they're having a Cinco de Mayo event. So we do welcome you guys to come out. It's going to be on May fourth from six PM to eight PM. We're gonna have some food, some music. Again, I did post lots of flyers out here if you guys are interested. We have our pre-ballet program taking off from March eighth to May tenth. It's still open, so we have a few spots if you guys have any three and a half year olds to six year olds that are interested. And then also with regards to our sports programming, we have youth baseball, T-ball, and girls softball. That's actually from the ages of five to twelve years old. Our standard fee is twenty-five dollars. So they're kicking off on Thursday for their first practice. And then on opening day is actually going to be this Saturday. And then also with regards to volleyball, we are going to be having that program to kick off until May tenth. Okay? So if anybody's interested to participate in the stakeholders meeting, I did leave a couple of applications there. You guys can fill that out and then just drop it off at our Loma Alta Park inside the facility, okay?
Did you mention the Cinco de Mayo?
Yes.
He just talks really fast. Okay. All right.
Okay. Can you clarify the stakeholder meeting is for the Parks After Dark programming or?
No, that's just a, well, actually it kind of is. So what's going to happen is we're inviting a couple of community partners, either if you hold a recreation class with ours, if you offer any resources. I know we've invited like New York Life to come out. But we do want to see if you want to partner up with us during summer pad. So you can either set up a resource, a booth there, or if maybe you have a class you want to teach, something involving with that.
Thank you.
Sure. You just for the youth baseball? Between five and twelve years old. Thank you.
Any more questions? Okay, thank you. Thank you. It's always good to hear from Parks and Rick. Fun stuff. Now, our library. Nikki Winslow. Oh, we gotta move on.
All right, it's not a library presentation without my PowerPoint, right? All right, good evening, council members and members of the public. Good to see everyone. So on to our next slide. So I know you are shocked to hear that we are still hiring. I do feel like a recruitment specialist at this point. We are still looking for an adult services manager. So if you know of anyone who may be interested, please send them to our website. We also recently posted a library aid position that we're going to be filling. That's an entry level position, twelve hours a week, really good job for like high school students, college students, people that would just like to work a little bit and work around other schedules. So that recruitment's going on right now. And I'm really excited to share that we just posted new to Altadena Library District, ten-week paid internships. So we're looking to hire probably three college students or high school graduates that want to gain skills in marketing, IT, facilities, maintenance, library services, or technical services. So those are all on our employment page. And like I said, they're going to be paid positions, fifteen hours a week for ten weeks over the summer. So excited, I've never done that before in all of my library time. So with redistricting, I've talked about this ad nauseam. We are almost done with the redistricting process, which really quickly means that our trustees will not be voted in at large. They will be part of a district that they live in. We'll have five districts in Altadena. At the last hearing of the four required public hearings, the board pretty much agreed that they liked the green map. All of the maps are available on our website at altadinalibrary.org/redistricting. And our demographer, our demographer actually put out two variations of the green map. So if you have opinions or thoughts, please send them our way. You can shoot us an email or attend our final public hearing, which will be on April twenty-fourth, our regular board meeting next Monday at five o'clock. Okay, building projects. So I actually almost just came straight from the Pasadena Unified School District Facilities Committee meeting, where today we met with them to pitch the idea of using the Franklin Elementary School, six of their classrooms as an alternate site when we closed the main library in approximately a year and a half for renovation. We kind of got the go-ahead to start writing an MOU with them, so fingers crossed that will work out and we'll have an alternate site for staff to work at, programs to be offered, and collections for people to visit and use while the main library is closed. Because that's going to take approximately eighteen months to two years when we start renovating the main library. We're also exploring additional state grants. They opened up another round of grants. We already got seven and a half million, but I'm greedy and gonna try to get more. And we're still going through the Bob Lucas conditional use permit process. Everybody send positive thoughts into the universe that, that will pass or will get that sooner than later. We're really hopeful we'll be able to start the Bob Lucas project in this fall at some point. And I did bring a board with our very early schematic design for the main library renovation. Still looking for feedback and thoughts on that. I brought a little quarter sheet where you can write down what you think of it so far, other things you'd like to share. We have a very robust page on the website that gives the history of the buildings and everything that we've done in the last few years. That's altadinalibrary.org/next-chapter. So please visit and share your thoughts. As usual, I'm pushing technology and eresources. If you haven't visited our website, we have many, many databases that provide lots of amazing information. This month, we're pushing Nat Geo Kids and Brain Fuse as we're approaching the end of the school year. If you know students that need to write papers, do projects, or want online live chat or tutoring, have them visit our database page on the website. So I'm sure none of you realize, but next week is National Library Week. We're going to be all over town celebrating. I brought a flyer, it's back on the table. We'll be stopping at one of our read local shop local businesses each day of the week. So hopefully we'll get to see you out in the community. Again, there's a flyer that will show you where we'll be each day. And next Tuesday, April twenty-fifth, is National Library Workers' Day. So make sure you thank your favorite library staff. It is time for our annual Friends of the Altadena Libraries Annual Book Sale. It will be held in the main library parking lot, May twentieth and twenty-first, both days from twelve to four. If you're a Friends member and it's only ten dollars to join, you actually get access from ten to twelve both days as well. So hope to see you there. I also have another flyer in the back highlighting our upcoming one-day botanical printing workshops, which will create a community quilt. Each of these workshops that are going to be held in June and July are going to be focused on the eight different census tracts. So Altadena Town Council members can pre-register until April the twenty-first. So again, the flyer's in the back. And then open, registration will open to the specific census tract starting on May first. There's lots of information on the flyer. If you have questions, just feel free to reach out to us. We're concluding our Poets Laureate season for twenty-two, twenty-three. Our big annual event that's been taking place, I believe since two thousand and three, is called Poetry and Cookies. This is the first time we're holding it in person since the beginning of the pandemic. So hope to see you there. That's going to be a week from Saturday, the twenty-ninth, from eleven to one. And all of their programs do live stream on YouTube as well. And you can go back and watch previous programs they've had. They've had a very robust programming season. Music at the Altadena Library. So we sent out postcards who got their postcard. Right here, yeah. I was excited. That's the first direct mail we've done in a really long time promoting not only the band that we recently had, but the next two. Our next one will be May the thirteenth. That one's going to take place in the parking lot at seven o'clock because the band is upstream. If you've seen them, they draw a very, very big crowd. I think last year it was over four hundred. And they're awesome, so hope to see you there. And then we're also going to be concluding our Mount Lowe Chambers Players Concert Series. These are local musicians, like expert musicians. It's breathtaking. That final concert's going to take place inside the main library on May the twenty-first at three o'clock. I'm probably going over my time. So really quickly, art at the library. We're going to be doing Fab Lab Foundations. And if you want to learn how to use a cricket machine, you can sign up for two different workshop, workshops in May. And then we'll also have a really great art exhibition called Memories That Make Home, which is a solo show by Kimberly Espinosa on loan from Las Fotos Project. And as usual, lots of programs going on. We're going to be having Compost One-O-One with LA Compost. If you'd like to come to that at the Bob Lucas Branch, which we do have composting at Bob Lucas. And I think there's about fifteen open spots still. So if you're interested in learning about composting, encourage you to show up or register for that and show up. And we'll also be doing a Dia Celebration on Saturday, April twenty-ninth, musical bilingual performance by Noteworthy Puppets. So if you know kids that like puppets, it's a really cool show. Tuesday, May second, we will have Lit Fest in the Dina. We did this program last year that will be from six to eight-thirty, really, really amazing program with some authors. The Fourth, May the Fourth Be With You. Please show up and Stories Crafts and a Saber Guild lightsaber demonstration. That'll be obviously May the fourth from four to five. And we recently partnered with the Carnegie Science Observatory to do a program at Bob Lucas outside. It was like stargazing and over seventy people came. And I heard it was an amazing program, so this one will probably be even more wildly popular. So hopefully you can make it on Cinco de Mayo, May fifth. And lastly, I know it sounds weird, but we actually offer meditation on Zoom. I've participated, it's cool, turn the light off and lay down. So that'll be on, I don't remember what, Tuesdays, Tuesdays in May at seven PM. It does seem weird, but Zoom, you can actually meditate. It's really interesting. So register for that, that's a pretty popular program as well. And we're going to have a Chinese calligraphy workshop. I believe it's AAPI, I'm not going to remember all of the Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month in May. That's going to be held on Thursday, May eleventh from four to five. And, you know, that's just a couple of things going on at the library. Please check out my flyers in the back and thank you. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
In regards to your book sale, are you looking for a push right off the donations or do you have all the books that you're going to sell?
You can always donate books to the library. There, there's a lot of books, but yes, you can always donate your books to us and they will incorporate those into the sale. And, and a lot of what they don't sell at, when, once it concludes that weekend, they end up selling. they end up selling through a third party that picks them up, so they're always rehomed, pretty much.
Okay, anymore?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Moving right along, the Chamber is not here, so we won't be having a Chamber Report. And we won't be having an ACAB Report. Okay, so we're going to move right on to number six committee reports, and we're going to go to land use. Diane Marcusson, the Chair of Land Use.
Yes, we, sorry. The land use committee met two weeks ago, and we reviewed one project, which is listed here on the agenda. Pat will be presenting that. I did want to say first that some of you may remember or know that we're working on the Owen Brown Gravesite as a result of a CUP that came through for La Vina. And we have monthly meetings for that project. The meetings have changed. They're now on the second Tuesday of every month at 10:00 AM here at the Community Center. And so the next meeting will be May 9th at 10:00 AM here at the Community Center. Okay, so I'm going to pass it over to Pat to go ahead with this project that we reviewed. We did review, and we voted to recommend approval of the project with condition. The committee did.
Okay. Jessica Padilla, are you here? Would you mind coming up to the lectern so that if the council members have any questions, they can ask you those questions? Let's see how we do. Liljer Damasa, who is the agent for this particular transaction, was not able to come tonight. However, Mrs. Padilla is the owner of the restaurant, so hopefully if there are any questions, either she or I will be able to help you. So let's see how I do with the presentation. El Caporal Mexican Restaurant is a family-owned restaurant at 2100 North Fair Oaks, which is just south of Woodbury. This request is for a license to sell beer and wine, along with the food that's served at the restaurant. While food is sold for takeout, no beer and wine is going to be sold for takeout. To the council members, you've received information, some of you a couple of times, regarding this request, which includes a map of the property. And if you look at that map, you can see it's a long, narrow property. The restaurant itself is toward the front, and the parking is in the back. And one advantage to some people for that is that it creates a sort of a buffer between the restaurant and the houses on the next street, which is Raymond. Got that one, that one, that one. We had 32 flyers that were delivered to the closest neighbors that included residential and commercial properties, church and a preschool. Of those that where Alan had spoken directly to the people, six responded positively or no concerns with it, and one was negative. And just because someone asked the question before, the preschool was the one that responded with no concerns. I haven't done this for a while, so do we get questions first, or shall I make the?
Well, no, we can, does anybody have questions right now based on what Pat presented? Okay, no, you can make your motion, and then we'll get that discussion after that.
We'll see.
Yeah.
Okay. In the matter of CUP number RPPL 2022003002, project number PRJ 20220010488-5, an application to sell beer and wine at an existing restaurant. I move that the Altadena Town Council send this request to Regional Planning with the recommendations to approve the request with the following conditions, which is the longest piece of thing I have to say. Well, we shortened it a little bit from the previous time. These are the conditions that we have proposed, and all of them are agreed to by the owner. Number one, the sale of alcoholic beverages shall be from 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM from Sunday to Thursday, and 9:00 AM to 11:00 PM on Friday and Saturday. No alcohol shall be served at the site beyond 10:00 PM from Sunday to Thursday, and 11:00 PM on Friday and Saturday. Any unfinished serving already being consumed at the time shall be consumed within 60 minutes of the latest permitted time to serve alcohol at the site. Two, security cameras should be installed inside the restaurant and outside facing the outdoor dining area and surrounding area. Video footage shall be retained for at least one month, and shall be made available to law enforcement upon request. Three, a monitored security alarm shall be installed on the premises. Four, the permatee shall not advertise the sale of alcoholic beverages on the exterior of any structure on the subject property, including windows, walls, fences, or similar structures. Five, all regulation of the State of California prohibiting the sale of alcoholic beverages, two minors, shall be strictly enforced. Six, the permatee shall post or otherwise provide telephone numbers of local law enforcement agencies and taxicab companies at or near the cashier or similar public service area. Such telephone numbers shall be visible by and available to the general public. Seven, there should be no consumption of alcoholic beverages outside the designated areas of the subject facility. The permatee shall instruct all designated employees who directly serve or are in the practice of selling alcoholic beverages regarding this restriction. Eight, the permatee shall develop and implement a designated driver program, i.e. free soft drink or coffee to a designated driver of a group. The permatee shall submit the program to the Director of Planning for approval prior to the approval of the CUP. All employees shall be trained on the program. A printed two-sided card explaining this program shall be placed on all tables in the restaurant, or a notice regarding the program shall be printed on the menu. Nine, all servers of alcoholic beverages must be at least 18 years of age. Ten, no dancing or dance floor is authorized in or outside the premises. Eleven, there should be no music or other noise audible beyond the restaurant premises. The restaurant will comply with all LA County Noise Ordinance provisions. Twelve, not less than 51% of the income from the business enterprise shall be derived from the sale of food and non-alcoholic beverages. The business owner shall at all times maintain records which reflect separately the gross sale of food and the gross sale of alcoholic beverages. Said records shall be available to the Los Angeles County Department of Regional Planning, the Department of Alcoholic Beverages Control, or the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department on Demand. Thirteen, the permatee may hold happy hour drink specials or similar promotions from 3:00 to 7:00 PM, seven days a week, only in conjunction with food. Fourteen, food service shall be continuously provided during operating hours. Fifteen, no service of alcoholic drinks will be done in disposable cups of any type. Sixteen, the outdoor seating area shall be clearly defined and follow all ABC rules for outdoor areas. Seventeen, a trash can shall be provided in the outdoor area and emptied regularly. Eighteen, there should be no display of alcoholic beverages from coolers or refrigeration. Nineteen, there should be no sales of alcohol from an ice tub. Champagne buckets are exempted for onsite consumption. Twenty, the permatee and all managers and designated employees of the establishment who directly serve or are in the practice of selling alcoholic beverages shall participate in the LEAD Licensed Education on Alcoholics and Drugs Program. All new designated employees should be required to attend. The licensee shall display a certificate or plaque in a public accessible area of the establishment, such as the lobby, indicated they have participated in the program. Proof of completion of the facilities training program by employees, the licensee, and all managers shall be available upon request. Twenty-one, alcoholic beverages for on-sale site consumption shall be sold to customers only when food is ordered and consumed. And twenty-two, there will be no alcoholic beverages sold for off-site consumption. Okay.
Pretty long.
No. No. Are there any questions?
Any discussion? Okay, I'll second the motion.
Okay, the motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions? No, we just vote? Okay.
Oh, my gosh.
I know. I can't wait after all that. Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Okay, so it's moved. Thank you, Pat, for doing a good job.
Thank you. You did a good job there, Mrs. Padilla.
That's a lot. Thank you. Yeah, and, yeah, can you make sure that I get a copy of it? I never know when those letters blow out. Okay, thank you. Okay, now we're going to move on. 6.2 Communication Committee. And I just want to make a little public announcement. If you want to do public comment, you need to get your card up. Fill it out in the back and give it to Reggie right here. Okay, so.
Sorry for the interruption. I think there's a can filled with dollar bills out there somewhere.
Hopefully.
There it is.
Hopefully hundred-dollar bills.
Make sure that gets back around to Councilmember Reggie over here. He's desperate to put his money in, and.
Okay, we move on to our Communications Committee. Nick Aronson, the Chair.
Thank you, Chair. The Communication Committee has a number of ongoing projects and new ones that we just began in 2023. We continue to create and distribute new neighbor welcome packs for folks moving into Altadena each month. If you are relatively new to Altadena and you haven't received one of these packs, just get ahold of me. I'll make sure you get one. We had a nice bump in escrow closings this month, so council, you've got a healthy list if you want to get them from me and get the packs out to your new neighbors. Our high school internship program continues to put our teens in the area to work with nonprofits and important community engagement projects. We're always open to more volunteers, so if you have teens looking for service hours or just wanting to be part of civic engagement, get them in touch with me as well. So let me get on to our four new projects. One is a website subcommittee. This is important to you, council members, dedicated to an ATC website cleanup and potential overhaul. The subcommittee is being led by Councilmember Pat Sutherland. Thank you, Pat. And she has recently reached out to the full council for input. Please be sure to respond to her. If anybody is willing to sit on that subcommittee, this is the opportunity for you, and the opportunity's coming up for the community to chime in and say what you want changed. So don't tell us afterward. Tell us before, please. She's also requesting the council members consider taking a seat. That will be really useful. I'm going to encourage maybe just a meeting that we have with council members if they don't want to take the commitment of a full seat. Maybe we can sit down and chat for about an hour about what the website might look like. I asked my, okay, I already did that. Let's move on to Communication Task Force. I do want to thank my fellow council members and about 19 to 20 community members for making a lot happen with the Communication Committee, because I am just driving the car at this point, and they are making all the work happen. So we've created a Communication Task Force that will be committed to exploring and developing new and innovative ways to reach the community with important information from our council and county offices. At present, this task force is creating a single database intended to efficiently reach as much of the Altadena population as possible. This will likely be implemented for emergency and urgent info needed to get out quickly, and potentially as a monthly roundup of top issues affecting Altadena. If you have a neighborhood group, and council members, if you know of one in your tract or an organization that has nice reach or a lift serve, please let us know. We want to get them on board, so we're reaching as many people as possible. And lastly, we have two initiatives moving forward. One is an unhoused initiative that Councilmember Chipola will be leading. This initiative will look to educate residents on ways to help, as well as educating the unhoused on the options for assistance that we have in the area. And finally, we have a multimedia initiative moving forward with the goal of teaming up with local high school media programs and their students to create content for multiple platforms. This content will be focused on the Town Council and Altadena happenings, as well as efforts, events, peoples, and programs. I'm going to oversee this initiative, but it will really be led up by a local media professional, Barry Strick. We have so many talented people in Altadena, and Barry is one of them. He'll be gathering up other local professional mentors, and they will help guide the projects. So if you are someone in the entertainment industry or know someone in the media industry that has been looking for a way to help your community, please reach out to us. We know we have loads of you out there. For more information or to get involved in any of these programs, you can find all of our contact info on the website, altadinatowncouncil.org. And I'll just remind the council that anything we move forward on, we'll always approach you with first. Right now, we're just in planning stages, looking forward to present that to you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Okay, we move on to 6.3 Safe Streets. Councilmember Wong.
Thank you, Chair Jones. So the Safe Streets Traffic Safety and Mobility Committee of the Town Council meets the fourth Thursday of every month at 7:00 PM. So far, we are operating via Zoom, so it's been really exciting to get new voices joining the conversation about traffic safety and mobility in our community. And we welcome all council members to get involved, join in, as well any other community members. So check that out. Again, you can find the information on the Altadena Town Council website. There's this committee page, and you can kind of click down to Safe Streets to sign up for the next meeting. We did, through the Traffic Safety Directive, due to the recent pedestrian deaths in our community, through different outreach efforts with the community and with public works, the Safe Streets Committee submitted a feedback to the Directive response. And that, if anybody wants to read it, we'll put it on the Town Council website. But it's definitely applauding public works for their efforts, as well as suggesting a little bit quicker action as every day that goes by, another life can be lost. And about, I think, one in five of our injury collisions involve a pedestrian walking or biking. That's over 20%. And so we've really got to work on that. And there is an opportunity out there, if we choose to accept it, Altadena. This is the Southern California Council of Governments. They have a program called Go Human. And these mini-grants are actually going to be offered up to community-based organizations for capacity building. And the goal of the Community Hubs program is to improve traffic safety locally and across the region, leveraging and building community leadership committed to traffic safety, leveraging community venues from parks to community centers, virtual networks to address immediate and long-term community care and needs, support creative and critical placemaking and place building, prioritizing projects that center historically excluded, divested communities, mobility justice, disability justice, and rural investment. So it's an opportunity, and it would be great for our community to really think about how coming together as a community can really address really the quality of life and public health, the quality of our community. So anyway, email me, dorothy.wong@altadinatowncouncil, if you want to find out more. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we move on to 6.4 Education Committee. Councilmember Nat.
I just wanted to highlight a couple of upcoming community events in support of our public schools. This Saturday, April 22nd, which is Earth Day, is PUSD's District-Wide Science Fest, which will be held at Mura High School from 12:00 to 5:00. You can expect a wide range of interactive exhibits, hands-on activities, and engaging demonstrations that highlight the latest in STEM. There will be over 100 exhibitors, including Star Wars 501st Legion, if you know what that is, SpaceX First Robotics Team 2404, Mount Wilson and Carnegie Observatories, the LA Dodgers Performance Science Team, Caltech Astronomy, NASA JPL Europa Clipper, and so many more. This event is free and open to the public. Next week, on Wednesday, April 26th, is Altadena Elliott Arts Magnet Third Annual Art Walk from 5:30 to 7:30, which is a dual-campus event showcasing a curated selection of student artwork and student performances. Guests are invited to walk between both campuses along Calaveras, and there's usually interactive things happening along that walk. So that is it for me.
Okay, thank you. Okay, lots going on here in Altadena. Okay, can we? Okay, can we have all the general public comment, all comment cards up, brought up? Any?
Do I have them all?
We have them all. Like, I have the last chance.
Okay, so I'm gonna call just a couple of people up at a time. Um, uh, Councilmember O'Malley will time you. You've got two minutes, two minutes, right? Yeah, two minutes, yeah. Um, so first, I'd like to have, um, Zach Fishman, followed by, um, Jeannie Thompson and Barbie Ashida. So if you want to come up to the podium here...
Yeah, be ready to go, yeah.
So just come on up behind him.
Hello, my name is Zach Fishman. Uh, I'm one of the owners of Prime Pizza. Uh, we are a, uh, authentic New York-style pizza, uh, slice shop. We have, uh, six locations here in Los Angeles and I'm very proud to say that Altadena will be the seventh. Uh, we are going into the, uh, previous Patty Cake Space on New York and Allen. And I just wanted to come at the invitation of Councilmember Nap. Thank you so much for inviting me to come and introduce our restaurant to the community. I've lived here, uh, for about six years now, so I'm a member of the community. And, um, obviously, I, I really love it here and I'm really, really looking forward to opening, uh, our seventh location here in Altadena. And our website is, uh, primepizza.la. You can email us at info@primepizza.la. And, uh, we just had a great little, um, little sale of the, some of the bakery equipment, um, at our, um, at our location and some of the councilmembers came and it was a great little community get-together. And, um, we look forward to doing a lot more of that kind of stuff. Um, this location is obviously gonna be very personal to me and I look forward to really being involved in the community. And, uh, yeah, that's it. Thanks so much.
Thanks, Zach. Jeannie? Jeannie Thompson? Sure.
Good evening. Uh, I think this is about three minutes, so I hope you'll let me finish.
They will.
I'm not an ad-lib speaker and this is the last thing in the world that I would be doing on a Tuesday night, but I love my home and neighborhood and I'm willing to stand up for it. So I will be reading my public comments concerning the pop-up taco stand that has plagued our streets since September twenty-twenty-two. Some folks might say, "Oh, a taco stand, that's great, let's check 'em out." While they are checking the taco stand out, they are not thinking about the problems the stand brings to the homes and neighborhoods directly impacted. We are suffering from Senate Bill Nine-seventy-two and Nine-forty-sixth that has no if, ands, or buts to it. If it is a problem with the area, it cannot do business. And when the neighbors unite, asking for the business to be removed, it is done. But the business is a nuisance, then it should not be allowed. Those senators who developed this bill did not think it out fully. They did not consider any negative situations. We are suffering with generator noise from sunset to around midnight. We have to turn the volume up to hear the TV. We cannot go to bed at our normal time and sleep due to the generator noise until midnight. We are suffering from the bright lights that are shining in our windows until midnight. Just recently, I called the sheriff's station to complain about the noise and lights and the young lady told me, "Just close my blinds." She kind of backed off of that statement, but honestly, I had to bite my tongue not to bless her out. Why do I, we, have to make sacrifices for them? We are suffering from the workers' bathroom breaks where they are urinating near folks' yards, the liquid waste they throw out on the sidewalk and street, the charcoal burns on the vegetation, the crows, the possums, and other vermin that are attracted to the food waste on the ground, and the increasing grease stains on the sidewalk. We are suffering from missing our peace of mind that comes in the evening on Lincoln, when it used to be relatively quiet, aside from cars. The summer is near and I'll no longer enjoy sitting on my porch due to this allowed activity by our elected leaders. We are suffering from car doors slamming, loud, loud cars pulling up, car music, meat-chopping noise. What about the tax-paying property owners? This taco stand is probably not paying any taxes. Why do these permitted or unpermitted stands have more rights than the tax-paying homeowner? I cannot speak for the church congregation, but I have talked to the property manager. They are really impacted. Tent legs on their property, storing the taco stand items on the church property, people parking in their lot to buy tacos, leaving trash, et cetera. Round one lasted from September twenty-twenty-two to January eighteenth, twenty-twenty-three. Round two was from three-eighteen.
I'm sorry, I, I get you.
One more pair.
Okay, just really quick.
Okay. Um, we are now on round three. We are, we are frustrated. How can this activity be stopped in our neighborhood? I hope that the Town Council will make a recommendation on this subject and put it on the agenda. To end my comments, I say this. If this activity was taking place on your block, what would you do and how would you feel? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes.
Go ahead, Barbie.
Mine. Hi, um, thank you, Town Council, for your persistent and consistent work. You are the Altadena community voice. You are the most recognized communication channel with the county. You are the only body that people have elected from all parts of Altadena. No other organization in Altadena can claim that. I'm here tonight to encourage you to strengthen your own voice, which in town, which in turn, sorry, strengthens the community's voice. There is so much change right now. Rather than reacting to each change, how can we, as a community, be proactive by defining more what we want? How can we work together to improve communication beyond social media? A small group of women have recently, and this is the, the grant that, um, Dot was referring to, um, have recently gathered and are considering applying for a grant to build community, communication, and voice in Altadena, but need a Five-Oh-One-C-three to be a fiscal sponsor. Did you know the library is not a Five-Oh-One-C-three? We didn't know that. We continue to look for an organization that would be willing to work with us, but wouldn't it be nice if we could look to the ATC? It, uh, please consider this option going forward, um, to strengthen your voice, the community's voice, and to build a resilient Altadena for the future.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Donna Sider, um, Shae Shae Yancy, Mark Jones, if you guys want to approach. And then there's two after that. Is this you two, Jasper?
Good evening. I'm Shae Shae Yancy and a proud Altidinian. In my human resources profession of about forty years, I've experienced that people are quick to complain and slow to compliment. So tonight, I would like to thank Chris O'Malley, Dr. Thomas, Nick Arzon, Veronica Jones, for the time and concerted efforts given to this violent mural on northwest side of Altadena. Again, we thank you, we appreciate you, and we look forward for follow-up conversations regarding this mural. However, please know that I will continue to use my voice, along with others, to get in some good trouble, as John Lewis would say, by protesting on weekends in front of that mural until a change is made. Thank you.
Thank you.
Come on, Mark.
Uh, good evening. My name is Mark V. Jones. The V is always taken out, I don't know why, but Mark V. Jones.
Mark V. Jones.
Um, I'm a resident of Altadena for, uh, a long time, fifty years or so. And I'm here to talk about the mural also. Um, when I saw it, it was brought to my attention and, you know, art is subjective. Um, but hearing the other comments and what other people had to say and then I'm actually looking at the mural and seeing the violence and everything and then the title of the mural, mural, Chaos and Violence. Um, I'm wondering what the artist had in mind. I did leave my, um, email number for that the artist could, who, someone to get back to me and give me some answers on this. And, um, I think it's something that doesn't need to be, uh, in the community. It, it needs to go. And I'm also curious and wondering if this artist is gonna take this chaos and violence over to La Cañada, Pasadena, Ciamadre, San Marino, anywhere else. Thank you.
Thank you.
Donna, are you still here? Okay, Donna's not here. Okay, and then we have Yolanda Dorsey. Are you here?
Yes.
Great, come forward. And then Nicole Moore.
Good evening, members of the Altadena Town Council and everyone that's here this evening. My name is Yolanda Dorsey and I've been a resident of Altadena for the past fifteen years. I too am a proud Altidinian. I'm here tonight representing for the CINCH Neighborhood Association, um, to share our dismay also with the mural. So I'm tagging on to those that, that have come before me. Um, the mural is very unpleasing. Um, it depicts violence and hatred. This is something that we, that is not welcome and we do not want in our community. Um, I know it's been approached by many and actually, I'm glad to see that there's a flyer, um, for the signing of the petition to have the mural removed. Um, at this point, we're just, I want to say that I know that there's a saying that says, "Beauty is in the eye of the beholder," but there's no beauty at all to be seen in this mural. So we're asking that the powers that be and that our leaders, um, direct us on how we can go about peacefully and, and safely having the mural replaced with a piece of art, um, that is welcome, that's more beautiful. And as those that have said before me, that, that already came up, anyone you can drive up Lincoln and on the northwest corner of Lincoln before you get to Altadena Drive, you can see this horrible, uh, piece of art, as they call it, but it is not art and it's not welcomed by the community. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. And when she says CINCH, she's talking about a hundred and sixty-seven homes in the community.
Nicole? Come on up.
Hi, my name's Nicole Moore. I'm a twenty-year resident of Altadena now and I am been pulled out of my house and into the public, um, because my daughter told me, "We need to have good neighbors." So I'm speaking on behalf of the folks who came up here a couple of weeks ago, telling trauma that this mural is causing in their lives. I was moved by the video of that, so I'm gonna appreciate the people doing the video because it allowed lots more people to see what's really going on. Listening, respecting, honoring our neighbors. In West Altadena, we're in a fast-changing neighborhood. Every week, my kid comes back and says, "Another multi-generational family" that includes her friend from Europe, "is having to move because of rising rents and they can't afford another house here." We appreciate investment in our community, but we need the investment of good neighbors. And that's what my daughter, who's a ninth grader at Mura, told me. This is her community. She's lived here her whole life. She values this community. We need to listen to our West Altadena long-timers. It should be no surprise that we're also listening to black trauma in our community. And to ignore that is what we can't do in Altadena, what we cannot do in America. We have to make a change. I invite this body, even though there may be no law, to use your power, to use your voice, and to request that the, um, that the, the owners change the mural. The last one they had, nobody had a problem with. Okay, and that's my request. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Thank you. Okay, that concludes our public comment. We'll move on to our Census Track Report. And I want to thank each and every one of you that showed up for public comment because I, I am really, um, touched. The taco stand touches me every day. The mural touches me every day. So it, it's very personal and very in my face. So thank you for showing up to, to, um, express your concerns and staying here as late as you did. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to the Census Track Reports, forty-six oh-three oh-one.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I would like to, uh, briefly speak about the infrastructure upgrades. Not only does Southern California Edison give away, uh, scholarships, they are doing a multimillion-dollar project in the Crosby Cutover on the Crosby Circuit. They are upgrading from four to sixteen KV and the work started as of April the third and will go on to July the thirtieth. They're upgrading a hundred and forty-five poles in the area and primarily that goes from Fair Oaks Avenue, basically a little south of Altadena Drive, and will primarily affect the neighborhood of the Meadows off of Lincoln, north of Altadena. Um, there will be a few outages and Edison will make sure that they allow us to know when that will be happening, but I just wanted everybody to be aware that the aging infrastructure in that area is finally being upgraded. And we thank, um, Catherine Barger's office for, uh, helping to promote this and for Dorothy Wong for being, uh, advocate for the area. Um, they also have a lay-down yard off of New York Drive. So if you see seven to nine trucks off of Lincoln for Edison, that's what they're doing there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, forty-six oh-three oh-two.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Council, neighbors. Last month's meeting, I promised to return this month with community input regarding the mural at Unincorporated Coffee Roasters and it is my privilege to do so today. Uh, in the interest of keeping the surveying simple and quick, residents were asked to offer answers to three questions. Number one, have you heard of the mural? If they had not, uh, they were provided with a copy of the painting. Number two, what is your opinion on the mural? And number three, which includes some context, this mural project rotates once a year. The business is not violating any county code by displaying this mural and therefore neither Supervisor Barger nor the Altadena Town Council can demand that it be replaced. That being said, would you support or oppose the Altadena Town Council asking the owner to immediately replace it? We spoke with one hundred and forty-three residents, primarily in the homes that are in the immediate vicinity of the mural. The vast majority of residents had either he, heard of or seen the mural. Fifty-five percent of respondents had a negative opinion of the mural and the most commonly used adjectives to describe it were offensive, violent, and insensitive or tone deaf. Twenty-five percent with a positive view of the mural provided feedbacks such as, "It's just art," "Violence is part of the world," and "It is free speech." The remaining twenty percent that had neither a negative nor a positive view offered little specific feedback beyond, "I don't care," and statements roughly synonymous to it. In response to whether or not the Town Council should ask the owners to replace it immediately, sixty-five percent said that we should, twelve percent said that they were indifferent or unsure, and twenty-three percent said that they would oppose such a move. Opponents of replacement offered the following feedback. People should deal with it. People are too sensitive. These people are wacko. There are more important things to worry about and just don't drink their coffee. Supporters of replacement said that public art should be inclusive. It should resep, uh, sorry, represent the... It should represent the neighborhood and that the owner should be more sensitive to the community. A number of people, and to me, this is the key takeaway, who found the image either positive or were indifferent, supported the ATC request to the owner to replace it. Most offered reasoning along the lines of, it offends the Black community, the owner should respect that. Anecdotally, in my experience, the residents that wanted the mural taken down were much more passionate in their desire than those that supported keeping it up. After last month's meeting, which included a significant number of public comments regarding the mural, Dr. Thomas, my Census Tract co-representative, and I were asked to mediate a discussion between a group of residents opposed to the continued display of the mural and the ownership team of Alan Jawanian and Arthur Sorhobian, along with project curator Victor Bing. The meeting was amicable, with the residents expressing views that should be familiar to those who have been following the conversation, that it was too violent for a family community, that it triggered memories of gang violence and murders that occurred with some frequency in the area in the not-too-distant past, that it looked like Black men stabbing each other. The ownership reiterated their stance that the mural was not intended to be offensive, that art was meant to spark conversation, that they wanted to use the opportunity to, quote, "bring the community together". In the end, after taking a few days to think about it, Mr. Genoyan and Mr. Sorhobian decided that they, and I quote, "believe the greatest service to the community and their customers is to have the mural remain up until they commission the next one", and that they, quote, "will honor their commitment to keep the mural until the end of the year". Given the council's relative powerlessness in this situation, the most that we can do is ask that, based upon the input from residents most directly affected by the presence of this artwork, the owners of Unincorporated replace the mural immediately. We will also be sharing these results with Supervisor Barger's office, and we encourage residents to attend the Board of Supervisors meetings in person to express their concerns. On a personal note, and here I speak only for myself, I would like to express my disappointment with Mr. Genoyan's and Mr. Sorhobian's decision. Let me begin by saying that I believe in free expression. I'm a fan of having art in public spaces. I love Mr. Bing's postcard murals on the east side of town, the Bob Lucas, sorry, the Bob Lucas mural in my tract. I even like the code violating patty cakes mural. I also believe that public art should meet the community where it is, that it should be inclusive, respectful, and reflective of the values that we share. I suspect that had this mural shown men stabbing women or adults attacking children, the choruses of "This is Just Art" would be much quieter, and the demographics of those speaking in opposition would be much broader. I suspect that if this was a figure of white men stabbing each other, a different-looking demographic might be focusing more on the fact that there are three schools and two churches within walking distance of what is plainly a larger-than-life depiction of men stabbing each other. With respect to the current controversy, I choose to believe the testimony of long-term residents of the neighborhood when they say this imagery reminds them of a time when West Altadenians were subject to the violence and chaos of gang wars in their streets. I was not here then, but I do remember a time when the side of town that I now call home was one that had the reputation of a place that you wanted to do your best to avoid. I respect and acknowledge the trauma of those who lived through that, who experienced friends and relatives meet their end at the point of a knife or the barrel of a gun. Businesses like Unincorporated can play and have played an important part in bringing prosperity and peace to our community. However, those of us, both people and businesses that are relative newcomers, must also take the time to know the history of our community, to listen to those with whom we now share a home, and to understand that those who were here in 1983 or 1993 have experienced an Altadena that was very different than the one that we were blessed to move into. There are, as far as I can see, only two options here, and I'm almost done, sorry. Either the residents who have shared their stories, their concerns, and their traumas are lying to us and playing the race card to drive a small business with which they have had no previous problems out of town, or they are telling us the truth about their experiences and their pain and asking that their corporate neighbors replace the trigger that they have unintentionally put in their faces. I choose to believe my neighbors. It seems that Unincorporated chooses not to, or worse, they do believe them but simply don't care. Mr. Genoyan and Mr. Sorhobian have the absolute right to leave this mural up, as they have decided to do. But just because you have the right to do something does not make it the right thing to do. Thank you, Madam Chair, I yield the floor.
Thank you. Good job. Okay. Thank you for that, Chris, thank you. We have a lot of stuff going on in Altadena, and a lot of it is not positive. So I'd just like to see it just turn into positive things because we're such a good community. And just, even though it may be a taco truck or a mural, it's a big thing. It's not a little thing. It's a big thing, and it affects us, and it affects our quality of life. So I would just like to end our meeting there. Oh, we got something else? Oh, my goodness. I got, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I got all riled up. Okay, 4612. I'm sorry. I'm fired.
It's just a quick one that the, well, 10 to 1 against the street sweeping in my area, that's it.
10 to 1. Okay. Okay, note it. Okay. It's been moved and seconded. We are adjourned. Thank you. Thank you.